So it's 4:02, so I'm going to call the planning board meeting to order. Let's have a roll call. Carol?
Carol Hofes is here.
Julie?
Julie Byers here.
Lori?
Lauren Shifrin here.
And Natalie is here. And so why don't I have a motion to make Julie a voting member for tonight's meeting?
I move that we make Julie Byers a voting member for this meeting.
And I'll second it.
All in favor? Carol?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance says yes. Okay. All right. So I had not my video on because, you know, I've been out on the water all day. And in fact, I'm still in Rhode Island and you can see I have a hat here. So.
Oh, your video's on.
I know.
You look great. Oh, that's fine. He's off.
Okay, so let's get right back into the master plan. And as I said, I just got off the water in Rhode Island. So I gotta pull up my notes. And you got the notes I sent you, right, Beth?
Yes, yep. Am I muted? No, no.
No, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Beth, and I too have been straight out all day, basically hyperventilating to get stuff done. So can, can you guys just lead the, Beth, can you let us know where we left off? And then kind of go through maybe a screen share of where we are? And let's do this, the work session, just like we did, you know, the last time, I think we can get a lot more done.
Sure. Yeah, if hardly, if you could allow me to screen share.
I just did.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, right.
Who's puppy was that?
That's my puppy, sorry.
Right, Julie, what kind of puppy do you have?
This is a King Shepherd.
A King Shepherd?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
All right. I think you had finished the transportation and circulation recommendations?
Correct. We're getting ready to start the climate adaptation plan, if I remember right.
Okay, here you go. Oops, sorry. Was just trying to find my spot. Last DOT.
All right, any comments?
I have one comment on the third paragraph, one, two, three, the fourth line down. I think alternatives should just be alternative without the S. Buying alternative companies, just take the S off.
Yep.
I don't have any other comments. I mean, I don't have any comments on this section.
I don't have any other comments, but I agree with Beth's comments. So I'm gonna ditto what she said so that it's, okay?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes. So did they get a copy of what we did the other night?
Yes. As well as a link to the recording of the meeting, which is now on YouTube. So that was sent to the committee.
I still haven't gotten used to that part.
I thought you caught everything on this one, Beth.
Okay.
Just had a question. Does anybody know who pays for these electric charging stations? Know that they recommend we put in for the cars? I say electricity for that.
I believe that unless you have a grant, you're going to pay for them yourselves.
So, oh, I don't have an electric car, so it's like buying gas, you pay for the electricity when you charge it?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but there's no, I mean, who pays for the upfront charging station?
Hmm.
The government.
If it's through a grant, yeah.
Is, is pushing this, and that's why there's grants available for the towns to get them. They are backing the companies that will produce the electric cars. You gotta, you gotta look it up. There's gotta be history somewhere. If you Google.
I was just curious if anybody even had an electric car that used one of these.
No, of course not. This is a government plan. You need to check it out, especially those of you that work for the government.
Well, those of us that work for the government are very cynical, Laura, because I see so much. You don't know how much waste I've seen and how much.
You all know about the waste in the government, so, um, yeah.
September 30th, you, you, September 1st, they start spending money if you need.
Of course, because you have to show the need.
They'll buy a thousand pencils.
That's the problem with the assistance programs as well.
Yes, I agree.
They have to show the need. Unfortunately, not all the people that are supposed to get it are getting it.
I agree.
In reference to the electric cars, um, part of what the last administration did in making us independent of the oil was a halt to the electric cars. Now, gas prices are going up because, because of what this administration is doing with Iran, and they are going for the electric cars. It started a long time ago. So you'd have to look at 10, 15 years ago of what was started in initiatives of the government. Anyway, that has nothing to do with climate change, but.
But anyways.
Yeah. Well, we don't think it has anything to do with climate change. It might.
Maybe.
All right. Thank, thank you, Beth.
All right, so climate adaptation recommendations, those are all set, housing.
Do you know if they did any updates? Well, this one doesn't have it. The, I think the remark from the last notes that I had was that the data was outdated. And they were supposed to try to get, and Karen was on at our meeting when we talked about that. And I think she was going to look into some of that, some of those updates. And in relation to that, in last night's MRPC meeting, Beth, did you get the agenda for last night? Do they automatically send it to you?
For the Housing Authority meeting?
For MRPC?
Um, they sent MJTC and the Massachusetts Joint Transportation Commission. Is that what you mean? No?
No.
Okay.
Um, I thought that you normally got every month's packet.
Oh, yes, for the MRPC meetings. I don't get them every month. Sometimes I do, other times I don't. It's, yeah, because I'm not the representative, so they should go to you.
I do get them.
Excellent.
So what I wanted to know was, and I will try to forward you last night's report because there was a section in reference to the DLTA grant and the master plan, the mapping for the master plan.
Excellent.
I just want you to see how that last sentence was worded.
Okay.
About what they were gonna do. Okay, so I'll send that over to you.
Thank you. Um. Status reports, basically, okay.
I think in relation to some of what I said last month about the master plan being a living document, and we should be looking at more of a yearly tweak to the master plan, that although there's some information in here that could be changed, I'm still okay with accepting, you know, once we get the updated. But Karen is going to look at what's needed by the state, and as long as we meet those requirements, I'm okay with this. Until the next, I, I see this chapter as being something that will be tweaked each year for many reasons. Any grant coming down, anything we want to do through the trust, anything the housing authority needs to do or go for in a grant, will need this updated every year. And we can basically do that with sales data that we have. If, you know, if any place burns or permits that come out, that's stuff that's accessible to us, and we should be able to tweak that each year. Okay? Thank you.
All right, my comments are until further down, Beth.
I'm just gonna reiterate for the record that Michael's excused because he is a groomsman at a wedding.
Okay, thank you.
All right, stop. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but whoops, a little bit more, Beth. Stop. Uh, okay. The in-law apartment, the bylaw restricted the renovation to structures that have been in place for 10 or more years. That's not true.
You're right, Lance. It's not true.
I lost it.
And didn't we, wasn't that bylaw in relation to an accessory apartment? I don't remember it being called an in-law.
Yeah, it's an accessory apartment by law.
It's an accessory apartment, um, as opposed to in-law, so that's a good, Lori.
Yeah, correct. This was, and this was part of my notes. I'm glad that you brought that up. Um, I can't find my notes, so, but, but that, that is a real faux pas. We don't let that in there.
What was it? Does anybody remember the bylaw 145? Anybody?
I don't remember the number, but there's really.
Accessory apartment by law.
Yes, an accessory apartment, but there's no 10-year look back.
Oh. Perhaps, um.
I don't see the 10-year.
No. Oh, it's, the 10-year is on here. Uh, that Lance.
Second sentence in that paragraph, the big.
It's the third sentence, placed for 10 or more years.
Uh, third sentence up here?
Second, second sentence, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, this bylaw restricted the renovation to structures that have been in place. Oh, okay.
In fact.
Yeah, yeah.
If the master plan is going to refer to the 2019 bylaw, please put that bylaw in as verbiage.
Okay.
Exactly as it's written. Not as somebody's making it up, okay? Right, Lance?
I agree.
Come on, we need that attorney advice.
Oh, I would always quote the exact section.
Exactly.
Instead of paraphrasing it.
Exactly.
The exact section, and cite it, yeah.
You do know that if you get three attorneys in a room and they're gonna say something, it's gonna be three different paraphrases.
Absolutely.
They're not gonna be the same, so that's why you have to use what the actual document is.
All right. I might get some. Yeah, so this sentence here, I think, may be a little too general, if I remember correctly. It's a little more specific than that, the criteria that was set out. That was passed in the housing choice law. I don't think it was a general, any zoning bylaw can be changed with the simple majority at town meeting. It was related to development in low-income housing, right? It was any kind of zoning amendment to a bylaw specifically to increase low-income housing or create housing.
I think it was to create housing.
Yep.
I don't think that, are you talking about the federal government and the governor trying to push on an ease-up of zoning for construction?
No, this is the housing choice law legislation that was passed in early 2021. And I know the board members received copies of it. We didn't discuss it at length, but in their, in that legislation, as they state here, you know, for amending certain zoning bylaws, amendments can be made with a simple majority versus traditionally the two-thirds majority for, but they were specific zoning bylaw amendments, not across the board. So I think, you know, I know what they're referencing here, and I can show you all the document that's being referenced, but I think the reference is very general, that they, they need to be specific because they were.
Yeah, can you have them pull out the exact zoning that it would be in reference to?
Yep.
Like you said, it may just, it may suffice with one sentence, actually.
Yeah.
As long as they say pertaining to, and list what it pertains to.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry, I had to step away.
Uh, we're all done now.
Oh, great.
Only kidding. Okay, development potential. Whoa, the geologic features map is pretty wild.
Yeah.
Yeah, eyes go woo.
Also, the, the map is on a different, the map reference is on a different page than the map.
Okay.
It's up above the map, yeah, but it's on another page.
Okay, so there's the page break right there. Mm-hmm. Okay, so bring that down.
It's the same with the map up above.
Yeah, okay.
A general comment, maybe they should keep the captions together with the, on the same page as the map.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
I have one comment on the, under housing recommendations, that first sentence, it should say, I think, economic development instead of economic developed.
Okay. Does anyone, does anyone know why the geologic features map is stuck in the housing section?
I don't.
Just says, only going by what it says there about prime building sites. Insight on prime.
Well, we're, it says the map provides greater insight on prime building sites. Does anybody see why or what?
What?
They're talking about.
It says something about also those more challenging, but I don't see where the map tells you what color is the challenging sites or available sites. I mean, I understand geologically why they would say properties that have lead or ledge are known to be hard to put septic systems into, that that might be delineated, you know, that they would say that, but outside of that, that, that would be my only statement as to why it might be there.
Okay, yeah, so that makes sense, where you can develop property, uh, yeah, the challenges. Okay, thank you. So any housing recommendations? It looks like there are three. I think, one, two, three, are those three different ones? Yep. Wait.
I mean, that's, that's the recommendations.
Okay.
Well, I don't see anything. I don't see anything offensive there. I don't see anything that can't be changed, you know, from year to year when the needs change, so I'm okay.
Excellent. And zoning?
I have, I have serious heartburn with the zoning section.
Okay. I can do a general comment.
It's all yours, Lance. Go for it.
I mean, you know, just to the, to the standpoint that what's written in the zoning section, I don't see as having any, you know, they need to put in some support, you know, especially when they get to their recommendations. You know, because if I look at the recommendations, it says bylaws affecting the following are included in the change, allowing multifamily housing or mixed-use development as a right or special permit in eligible locations. Well, we already passed a 55-plus bylaw. Allowing accessory dwelling units on the same lot as a right or by special permit has already been done.
Okay.
You know, so, I mean, the, this section has all kinds of statements that are just untrue.
Okay.
Allowing open space residential development as a right, I don't even know what that means.
Open space residential development as a right, yeah, please.
And also, we have state laws that we must comply with, as well as our own zoning laws. Allowing reduced parking requirements for residential or mixed-use development. I mean, I don't see any reference to any support. It's just like someone had taken a rant on everything they didn't like about the zoning bylaws. There needs to be more support in this for me to, to even recognize these recommendations. I mean, you've got to do some work.
I, I support you, Lance.
I mean, like you say, allowing reduced parking requirements for residential or mixed-use development by special permit. I mean, the other towns do this.
Right, we already have that, too.
Yeah.
Um, it's in the bylaws now, and you can't, you do, you, you can go for a special permit, as I've learned. So, um, what about, I, I, forgive me, I, if we have feedback from the zoning board, I've not read it. Beth, have they commented on their section?
No, this is nothing. The only, this was forwarded to the building commissioner and no response was received. That was a while ago. Yeah, that was before the August 8th second meeting.
I mean, I feel so strongly on this section that it needs so much work that I could not support the master plan with this section as it is. That's how strongly I feel about it.
Okay, so, um, Beth, is there any way, well, I know that you work with zoning, right, Beth?
Uh, I'm the administrator for the ZBA, yep.
Okay, so, and, and they have not reviewed the chapter for master plan?
No, no, they have not. The zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, has, has that board um, received a copy of it?
No. I'd be happy to, to send them it.
You know, I think, I think my, I mean, I have such heartburn on this section. My recommendation is that we schedule a joint meeting between ZBA Planning and the Master Plan Committee to address the concerns in this section.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I agree with that. If we could do it, you know, in a timely manner. Um, we have, we have reappointed the committee. We are still looking to get it done this year, so. Uh, the sooner.
There's just so many things in this, Lori. I think we just need to all sit in a room and discuss it.
Okay. Or I'll be on Zoom if we can't sit in the room?
Exactly. I sort of, I mean, Zoom would be better than sitting in a room right now.
Okay, um, I am in favor, I, I would like to make a motion that we hold a joint work session with the zoning board of appeals and the master plan committee to review the zoning chapter.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Carol?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Lance? Yes, and I'm sorry, Lori?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Beth, can we go back to that earlier, we were talking about the simple majority vote and the two-thirds vote? You remember that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So Baker passed in 2021, it's called an Act Enabling Partnerships for Growth.
That's it.
And there's eight categories that can go by simple majority. And then there's other categories, one, two, three, there's at least three or four categories that can't. I recommend that they actually put the actual information in there instead of just quoting, you know, the way they did it.
Absolutely. Okay, great. So it's, so it's called an act, we can cite it right now, right, in the comment?
Um, it's an act enabling partnerships for growth.
Okay. I'll put that in the comment.
And so Julie, what does that, do you know what that pertains to or how it's divided?
It's just, it's broken out into what, what can go by simple majority vote. So for example, allow as a right or by special permit accessory dwelling units, allow as a right open space residential developments, and there's six other things.
Okay.
But then it'll, it also says, but some things still require that two-thirds vote.
Okay. And one thing, just, you know, I mean, some of the planning board members know this, but there, one of the things that we had discovered is that there's a huge impediment to accessory departments through the Department of Health. Um, and in particular, and Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the last accessory apartment special permit was for a home on Pheasant Ridge.
Yes.
So they basically required them to go through a Title V because they were adding a bathroom, and that required them to bring their septic system up to current code.
Mm-hmm.
Which was not cheap.
No.
Because you now need to have a larger septic tank, or you need to have actually two tanks.
Mm-hmm.
And so even though, you know, we, we have a bylaw allowing accessory apartments, it does have to comply with, you know, health department regulations, which, um, you know, clearly I have to support, but both, and, you know, those can be. those can be, represent a major obstacle to accessory apartments.
It's like adding a bedroom, which then changes the whole dynamic.
Exactly. And if you're adding a bedroom, then you need to have a septic system that supports that.
Right.
For usage. All right, I think we've gotten through this, then. Unless you have, unless I missed something.
The recommendations, so it looks like.
Problem, Townsend allows accessory apartments by special permit, but new or renewal units require an affordable housing restriction. That's not true.
Where, 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 yeah. Yeah, they, 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 it's not a restriction, but they're, they're, when we did the access, when the board rewrote the accessory apartment bylaw, if you recall.
It's for all accessory apartments. It's not for new ones.
Okay, for, for renewals and for new ones. Yeah, has to go through the Townsend Housing Authority.
It always has.
I would check with CHAS on that, just to be sure.
Okay.
There's a 15-year, when, when you renew your accessory apartment, there is a 15-year deed restriction, and you have to know that that's in place. And, and when we went to all of, all of them to be counted as affordable. So just check with CHAS, Beth. I don't want to be the one to say, because I'm not 100%.
Yeah, but I guess, I, I guess, you know, when, when we went with the original accessory apartment bylaw, it was voted down in the town. So, you know, I'm, I'm interested to know where the community support initiatives, you know, are for the zoning recommendations.
Good point. Sorry.
You know, and it's not true in terms of Townsend's currently limits multifamily dwellings. I mean, look at the latest, well, you know, 55-plus bylaw that we passed.
I think some of the work that needs to be done in reference to multifamily.
Yeah.
Maybe on the lot size requirement, then on the, just going by what the Board of Health is going to allow. So right now, the requirement for a multifamily is more restrictive than it may need to be. So that, yeah, that should be looked at.
But for the 55+, we totally relaxed that.
We did. But if you get, you know, you know what I'm talking about. If some, if the family decides parents to live on one side, kids live on the other side, you're going to have a two-family, that, that type of, uh, lot size requirement is not necessarily a good thing, as long as the Board of Health approves, you know, the sewage and well and whatnot.
Yeah.
Thing, that, that is a place where we could ease up a bit, my opinion.
Yep, I agree. Okay, anything else before we move on? All right, um, all right, so Beth, do you want to, I haven't had a chance to review the, the maps on the Townsend Bike Lane and Rail Trails. Have you received any comments from anyone else?
No.
Have you looked at it?
I haven't.
I haven't. It's really not my forte.
Can you, can you, um, sure, Beth?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it here.
Beth, can I just ask, I, I saw you scrolling down, and there was a, um, just a section there of a mixed use.
Okay.
Uh, I think it was up a bit, commercial and mixed use. I, I just want to see what it said. And I didn't go into detail on that revised off-street parking thing. I, I'm not sure where that's coming from, if that needs backup or not. Um, okay.
I would like someone to basically show what does Pepperell do, what does Ashby do, and is Townsend more restrictive than the comparable communities?
Okay, um.
I can't find the mixed use thing.
I know, I see the commercial, but I, and I, it just caught my eye. Um, but anyway, I'll try to look at it before we have the joint, uh, meeting.
Sure, all right.
And it's something where we need to be a little more flexible, and maybe it's right here, review lots divided, district boundaries. I don't know, I'll look at it again before we meet with zoning.
Yeah, and another thing is the, um, I didn't see anywhere in here about the town adopting, uh, Chapter 43D at the last town meeting.
Yeah, that should be in here, definitely.
All right, I don't know where that goes, but I'll just put it at the top.
Okay, that's a good catch. We do want to try to make this as up-to-date as possible, and certainly that is a new one.
We also, the scenic roads, um, bylaw, should we have that in here in the section, or, I don't know?
I don't think it has to be, but I, if I remember earlier in the document and their survey results, there was like a percentage of the residents that wanted to have trees protected along our scenic roads.
Oh, yeah. So some sort of a tree protection bylaw? I'm trying to think. Or I should put that comment in about the scenic roads. I put in the 55 and over.
Or, um, tree cutting or something. It was, it was early in the document.
Okay, in the zoning part?
Uh, no, um, hold on one second, I'll find it.
Okay.
It was something that was highlighted in yellow.
Okay.
Okay, it's on, actually on page 15.
So I don't have page numbers here.
No, no, I'm looking at the Word document. Uh, it's right, look for Government of Townsend.
Oh, so way back up.
It's really up in the front.
All right. Oh, I thought we'd go here.
It's just underneath table eight.
Okay, thank you. Chart eight or table?
It, it says table eight.
Okay, I gotta go ways down. Okay.
Going.
Right there.
No, um, yeah, right there.
So.
Restrictions on tree cutting on scenic roads, 68%.
Yep.
Okay, so they should probably make a comment that we passed the, you know, that we've had a scenic road bylaw and we, um, sort of clarified it, is what I would say.
Okay.
And currently, right now, it is anything that is in the public way. And so my question would be, would Townsend residents want to see it to extend beyond the public way?
Okay.
Cause, you know, that is essentially restricting their personal property rights. You know, if I want to cut a tree down in my front yard, do I need to get a special permit?
It used to be that way, but then I heard a number of years ago, when I actually had to have some trees taken down, I went and approached the town, it was Richanks at the time, and he said, no, you don't have to get them anymore.
I mean, the only, um, the only, I mean, so one thing that, um, in support of having a restriction on it, is that if I decided to clear-cut my front yard, then I could resolve in flooding for my neighbors. Because trees are very good in terms of.
Yeah, absorption.
Yeah. So I can, you know, affect others on what I do with tree cutting on my property. Add a ten to stone walls.
A way to blow this up a little bit, but this is essentially Townsend Bike Lanes and Rail Trails. Squana Cook Rail Trail is here in purple. And, um, the blue area is the future or planned paved bike and pedestrian pathway. And it looks like it's going into Groton here, and I don't know if it's connecting. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that, but that's what we received from Sheri Bean at MRPC.
Can you blow that up more, Beth?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how to do that. Um. Where is the?
Go to the little dot, dot, dot on the upper right.
Okay, thank you.
See where it says Zoom? Whoops.
Gotcha. It doesn't want to play. Come on.
I'm good, I can see it.
There we go. So, yeah, that's essentially what is, has already existing.
Okay, and where does it stop? Where does the red and the blue intersect? What road is that? I can't see that.
Oh, okay, that would be South Row Road.
Okay, I know where that is. Okay.
Yep, right there.
Okay, I think that's good, because what it's essentially doing is extending it to the school, correct?
Yes, I, I'm, yeah, that's the ultimate plan to connect, um, the high school and the Harbor Mall. I'm sorry, but actually, yeah, it's going to go right past Harbor Pond and the high school. Yep.
Yep.
It's going to be great. That's a great extension.
Great extension as well.
Mm-hmm, right into Groton, and I don't know where it will, what will happen in Groton, whether it'll be connecting or what. That's the, the Bike Lanes and Rail Trails. Sidewalks. Jim Smith from the Highway Superintendent will also be reviewing this, but this is a, a quick review. If, if you see anything that doesn't look correct, you can just let me know.
The only thing I found was, I couldn't find, in the legend, it says future sidewalks.
Yeah.
On, maybe it's my eyes, but I couldn't find that on the map.
Any future sidewalks?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
Because the current legislation basically says that these are existing sidewalks.
Yep.
The red.
I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't believe that.
We're going to have future sidewalks?
Sidewalks on, um, I mean, just to confirm, are these, um, truly existing sidewalks?
That's what I believe, based on, you know, I'm trying to remember what she based this on. I believe they're existing, but I believe they're also, they did have some planning documents, so, um, she might have taken some of this from the, uh, the Shared Streets and Spaces grant, but I'm, I'm assuming these are existing, what's in red.
And my only comment is, can you please confirm that the existings are in fact existing?
Yeah, okay, sure. Okay, so confirm all the red, yeah. It's down here. What is this, the, um?
That's my street.
I was just gonna say, is that, is there a sidewalk there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, good.
Every day, yes, there is.
I thought so. That's nice.
Yeah, they did a good job, Carol, with sidewalks, you know, and listed, you know.
Except, except, they don't, there's a whole section that's woods and it gets overgrown. The town just came through, because one of the neighbors called, because you couldn't walk down the sidewalk because of the overgrowth.
Okay.
And they did, and they did cut it back, but now you have spears. So when you walk out, I'm always afraid of kids, because if they fell, some of those branches that they cut off are like, like jungle spears.
Oh, yeah.
One of my neighbors is gonna try to get down with a chainsaw, but it's, unless it's maintained, the overgrowth just takes over. You got trees, I mean, and, and, I got a lot of the town came and they did the best they could, but it's a mess. Uh, one of these days, I gotta go down. Some neighbors and I are going to go try to clean up some of the mess that they made, but, um, that's one problem with sidewalks. If they're in an area where there's a lot of overgrowth, they quickly take over very quickly and makes the sidewalks impassable.
Okay, so I'll talk to Sheri Bean at MRPC and, um, and just make sure and ask her what the source of the data is, and if these have been confirmed as existing sidewalks. And if there are any future sidewalks, then, um, we'll get a revised sidewalk map, so.
And I would just say, if there's no future sidewalks, then we just take that off the legend.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find them.
Yeah, I mean, right.
If they're not, if they're not there, that's fine. I would just remove that from the legend, just so.
Yeah, okay. I would remove that, okay. Okay. Other roads, community boundaries, streams and rivers, lakes and ponds, good. All right. Um, how do we get out of this?
Stop here.
Okay.
Okay, so let me then move, is it all right for me to move to 2.3, Beth?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, um, with great honor, I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Julie to fill the full-time planning board position. Do I have a, uh, do I have someone to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to appoint Julie Byers. Did I say that right? To fill the, uh, planning board member, permanent planning board member.
And Lori, will you second that?
I would be honored to.
Oh.
Thank you.
Great. And Carol, how do you vote on that motion?
Yes.
And Lori?
I vote yes.
And Lance votes yes. Congratulations, Lori. We're looking forward to working with you as a full-time member.
Thank you.
He meant Julie.
I, I know.
He's been working with me full-time.
I'm tired.
I know.
So that will go, uh, that will be a joint appointment, um, I mean, an appointment made by the Board of Selectmen at a joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Um, and I can give you, uh, that date when I return from vacation, so.
That's all good, Beth.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Julie Byers, second.
And, um, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay, all enjoy your evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.